Beach over to Joanne.
It won't pick up.
It will.
Yeah.
Okay, we are live.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 7th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We are on air Zooming. First order of business is Municipal Officers Workshop Business Center Public hearing. First, we will start with a COVID-19 update. John, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, we are pleased to announce that the grant application we put in for the small grant program the state has offered to help pay for COVID-19 activities was funded. One larger item in it was the hiring of 10 beach ambassadors that we are out advertising for presently. Captain Shabbat of the Police Department is in charge of that and working with our HR coordinator. We are out there trying to find people that want to work on the beach. It pays $15 an hour and it's good for the rest of the summer and a little bit into the late or early fall season. So, we urge people who might want a job to, and be outside all the time, to apply. And you can apply online. You can call the HR Director or Captain Shabbat at the Wells Police Department, 646-9354, and he can explain the duties and the training that will go on with that. Other items under the grant are a couple electronic sign boards and then advertising and print media is involved. So, that was a good thing for the week. We are working through our fire department. The Fire Chief is in charge of filing for FEMA reimbursements and he is on top of that. Governor Mills' orders are, continue to come out and we try to comply with those. She has opened up to Connecticut, New Jersey, New York, New Hampshire, Vermont, still Massachusetts, and other states will need to provide some testing or quarantine regulations if they come into Maine and stay in lodging or rent a house. Those are the type of questions we are fielding quite a bit now. I probably get about 10 calls a day on people from Massachusetts, Rhode Island, trying to figure out what they have to do to come up and stay. So, I think what the state should do, quite honestly, is do more of a PR situation outside of the state. Instead of these great "Come to see Maine" stuff that you've seen now from the Maine Tourism Office, she should probably put out to media what has to be achieved from Maine. And of course, that's a negative and I'm not sure she wants to do that. So, the communities are still working together. We still talk together on what everybody is doing. In York, the beach ambassador program seems to be working quite well and that's what we're modeling our program after. Our beaches, as everyone knows, are open. The restrooms have been going pretty well and I think the summer is picking up with a fairly normal pace. We had our concert series, first concert Saturday. We, I attended it and I think it will be more successful as the weather gets better. It was pretty cold and foggy down there on Saturday night. But I still think we have to be cautious of having large crowds in that area and we urge people to wear face masks in these sorts of crowds and social distance. We've set up the chairs down there, the benches, in a way that provides for that and people were respectful of that on last Saturday night. But we want to have a successful concert series and there will, if the weather is bad, there will be no indoor concerts because there is no facility to do that and it's not safe to do it. So, that's it.
Thank you. I was a bit remiss in starting the meeting. Sean Roach is excused for this evening. He won't be joining us. He's working hard, I would say that. Next, we have some workshops. The first workshop is Review of the Property and Casualty Insurance Renewal, the raise of the property insurance deductible to $10,000 from $5,000 for savings of over $15,000. Mr. Foley from Cole Harrison, is he going to be joining us tonight, John, or no?
He is here in the room with us. Foley is the principal.
There you are.
It's the principal at Cole Harrison. We, Bob and I went through our renewal for this year, insurance renewal, and for last year, by changing our deductible on the public facilities, we could save some money. But we didn't want to do that unless the Board of Selectmen were willing to do it. So, Bob's here to talk about the higher deductible and the savings that could occur.
Welcome, Bob. Didn't see you there. You're so far away on the camera that we're looking.
Usually I'm not that hard to spot.
For somebody who's six, over six foot four or six, whatever, you should be easy to spot in the crowd, but.
The first thing I do need to apologize in the calculation of the savings, I misunderstood the, what the underwriting was giving me for information and the savings isn't $15,000. It's only $3,642. So, it's certainly not as good a savings as we hoped. I still think it's worth looking at and considering. I went back and looked at your loss history. In the last five years, you've only had three property losses. In the last seven years, you've only had four property losses. Two of those were fairly big losses. The one at the library was $154,000. The one at the transfer station, the fire was $848,000. And the other two were very small. One was $3,600 and the other one was under $5,000. So, even at $3,600, you haven't had a loss in two years, a property loss. Most of the claims that we deal with are liability claims and or auto field type claims. And this deductible wouldn't impact those coverages. It would only impact the property coverage. So, in two years, you would save over $6,000 by going up another $5,000 in your deductible. So, I think it's at least worth a consideration. The premiums did go up quite a bit this year simply because we added another $11 million onto the property because of the public safety building. And so, that did have an impact on the bottom line of the premium. So, and talking with John, I thought, you know, maybe we could try to save a little bit off that increase by trying to shave some off the bottom line with going with a higher deductible.
Questions from the board?
And I do know that you, the town sets aside $10,000 each year in the budget for self-insurance claims. And, you know, like I say, if in fact the trend stays as it has the last two years and you have no claims, you'll save that difference in the next two years. I think one of the things looking at from a risk standpoint, I mean, the town has some really new or fairly nicely renovated buildings. So, your exposures or your risk generally happen in older buildings and the town is fortunate to have the quality buildings in the house. So, I think you're protecting yourself from a risk standpoint as well.
Very thanks, Bob. If there's no questions at this point in time, we'll take this up a vote for later on. And our next workshop, number two, is under the noise ordinance. John?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, in your packets was a fairly comprehensive memo with four other town ordinances than our old town ordinance and present town ordinance. Captain Condon and the Police Chief and the Code Enforcement Officer and Planner have all worked on this over the last few weeks since we last met. We have also had a run on complaints and how many we've had since our last meeting. And we find that there's been, on that one property that kind of got this whole thing going, from June 6th to now, there has not been any complaints. Correct me if I'm wrong, Captain. And that's what our records show. So, I think what has happened there is the music got moved inside and it hasn't created a problem. But anyway, the issue that the board wanted us to look at was what changes in our ordinance could be undertaken that would include a scientific approach to the monitoring of noise during a complaint, i.e. decimal readings and a device, a measuring device. We would like to, as a committee that has worked on it, suggest to the board that what we are doing presently as a subjective ordinance in noise should be tweaked a little bit with the type of times and realignment of the wording in that ordinance. But we think that looking at what the other towns are doing and Captain Condon has talked to the other towns, that even though they have noise meters, they're not in use. They use a subjective approach first and then if it doesn't work, they go with their meters. But the educational training that goes into using a meter, times the number of officers that you have, is very complex and very large, very expensive. The meters have to be calibrated and when you end up in court over a noise issue, it's based on ANSI standards and it gets into whether or not your meter is calibrated and if it was used properly. So, I'll stop there and let others kind of verify. Captain Condon has been the expert moving on this. Jerry, did you want to?
Yeah, sure. As John said, there's a lot of towns that have the noise ordinance and have the dosimeter incorporated within it, but they're not using them. Some of them just went out and bought them just so they could say, "Well, we have one." And they're like $2,500 a piece. And then, you know, you've got training that goes along with it and that's just one person. Well, you know, I don't mind being trained, but are you going to call me out every time there's a noise? I mean, please don't. So, right now, the, I was on the committee or had a lot to do with the current drafting of the noise ordinance and we based it on what is reasonable and prudent. And I know that some people may not, may not like that, but here's the way I look at it, is the State of Maine says that a police officer can be trusted as a reasonable and prudent person to determine when someone is making noise loud enough to be charged with disorderly conduct, which is a state law, then we certainly should be, you know, capable of determining whether music is loud, is considered loud or reasonable at, you know, 10 or 11 o'clock at night. I mean, that's sort of the bottom line. If you, if you used it for all noise, you know, there's a lot of times by the time you get there and start measuring, the noise has stopped. Well, now, how do you, how do you measure that? And you have to measure from four sides and, you know, there's quite a bit to it. And that's why no one's using them. They can say they have them, but they're just not using them. So, I guess that, you know, for the sole purpose of enforcement, I would implore you to keep the, as John said, with some tweaking, to keep the ordinances the way it is. It's a common sense approach and, you know, if somebody's music is going at 10 o'clock and keeping somebody awake, well, you know, they either shouldn't, I'm sorry, but they shouldn't be living that close to that zone or the business itself has to have, you know, some hand tying, I guess, so that it's amiable for everyone.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sharon.
One thing I'd like to add, Carl, is, I mean, we've had this on for a while now and what it, what it has allowed is the police officer to work with both, both the griefed parties, whether it be a business or it could be someone running a sawmill. It could be many different things. But I know in one instance, we had a loud, loud music complaint at an establishment. The neighbors were complaining, so we worked with all the parties involved and found a compromise of moving, moving the band in the direction that the speakers were. As soon as we did that, the complainer or complainant was, was happy. So, it made them, for the lack of a better term, live more in harmony than they had in the past. So, a lot of it's just working with the people and in 90% of the time, 99% of the time, that's what we do. And the way it is written now allows us to do that. And again, you know, I was trained on the dosimeter many years ago and I think I used it once and it didn't work. So, we never really used them again. And that, okay, that was a few years ago. But it was, it's very tough to use them, like Captain Condon was saying. I mean, you've got to use them from different angles, different spots. You've got to wait till there's no traffic. You've got to make sure there's not a bird on the branch next to you, you know, chirping. You got to, it's, and also, if you read a lot of the literature on the dosimeters, they were not meant for quality of life things. They're more for hearing, like a constant, like machinery. It was more for factory. And that's what those were originally put into use for, for hearing loss and things like that. And it's also a difference between noise pressure versus noise impulse. They're more for noise pressure on your hearing at a constant for a long time versus noise impulses, more of your bass music and things like that. And there is, there are ranges and say you get a shooting complaint in a pit, you can't use it for that because it goes beyond 140 decibels and which, you know, renders the dosimeter useless. So, I mean, we'll go with whatever. I mean, I agree with John and Jerry on this and I know we've talked a lot about it. We need to talk more about it. And I don't think this is a quick fix in any, in any scheme of things, but it has worked. It's worked better than it did before when we were using, when it was the decibels.
Well, for everything I've heard and read and the report that I put together, I'm okay with leaving it alone, but any questions or comments from the board?
No, I think it's worked. And we've had this conversation over the years several times with, you know, when I and think that, yeah, it works. I think training, the cost of it, the number of complaints you actually really have, I agree, that allows both parties to work it out if a police officer is there. I think that's the best way is to keep it.
Tim, you're muted.
I'm fine with keeping it the way it is, except I am strongly in favor of erring on the side of the business. We give them the licenses. We tell them to entertain. They've been there forever. You know, it's hard on a business. I get what these people are saying. When at 8 o'clock, a police officer shows up to talk about a noise complaint, well, they're trying to run their business and then they have to stop and do this stuff with the police officer, which I'm not telling you guys how to do your job. I get it, you have to do your thing, but I, I just, it's a real struggle for these businesses when these things happen and it's a constant complaint. Now, I'm happy it stopped. I'm not sure why because, no, you're wrong. The music didn't move inside. He was outside last weekend, if I remember right, when I drove by with a, with a girl singing out there. But, you know, maybe the, it just stopped because the guy's not there. I mean, we all know, it generally is one person complaining about one business.
Right. So, we don't want to invest $2,500 and hours of training if it's.
I also don't want the business to have to shut it down every two seconds or have to run around trying to get stuff done.
Well, I guess that's my concern. What's the definition of reasonable and unreasonable? And then at what point do we or can we draw the line in the police being used as a harassment mechanism, I guess, is what my concern would be? Because I don't think that it's fair if an officer goes to a call the same place two times and it's the same, you know, it's the same volume. Why should they go back a third and fourth time? Does that happen? I mean, is there a way to prevent that? You tell me.
It may happen once in a while, but we're aware of that type of thing also and we're not going to put up with that. And we're not going to be used like that either. And, I mean, I think some of this can be addressed maybe even with you guys later on when you look at any outside musical, and I get inside too, but whether it's amplified, acoustical, you know, that's things for you guys to look at, maybe in the future. But we don't, we don't have that many noise complaints. We really don't. And I know you're talking about one individual place and nine times out of 10, when we go there, we say, "Close the door because they've opened it for airflow." They close it and it's fine. So, it's, and it's not usually management that opens the door. It's a patron. So, it's not even them and they don't even know it. So, and they've worked really well with us in the past. That hasn't been a big problem that I'm aware of. I know the guys go over there once in a while, but then we fixed, we used to go to the several establishments all the time and we finally figured out it was the position of the amplification and we worked with it. Everybody compromised and everybody was, I won't say they were happy, but they compromised and everybody got along.
Hey, sounds like we'll leave the ordinance alone. Department heads for their work and investigation in this. Thank you, Captain Condon. So, we'll, we'll leave it alone, see what happens. All right. Our next workshop is Discussion and Action on the Proposed Route 1 and Mile Road Park Design and the Next Step. Tim, are you going to take this? You want John to chew it up?
I'll let John queue it up.
All right.
I apologize in advance. I don't have a computer, so I can't share this, but what, what you, we had a workshop probably, hold me out, six months ago on this and it was fantastic that everything looked pretty good with the design and we're talking for the public now at the next door to the Irving Gas Station, between Irving Gas Station and the Mile Road on that side. It's a small lot that belongs to the town. We purchased it from the State of Maine. And the only change that was recommended six months ago was a connector of a sidewalk onto the Mile Road from Route 1. And I'm trying to figure out how we can do this.
That works.
Yeah. This is, yeah, right there was added to the sketch and this was what the sketch looked like before. And what we planned is a flagpole yardarm there that I think everybody thought would be better than several different flagpoles, the yardarm approach. So, if the board is ready, we'd like to begin pricing this out. We have had a lot of volunteers from the Knights of Columbus, thank you, to some construction companies, volunteer some help and some materials. And so, we'll get a final project cost to the board in the next couple of meetings and we can decide if we want to go forward with it.
The only thing that, this has been kind of a pet peeve of mine for quite some time, between the Irving Station and the traffic signal light, we have a fire hydrant that is dead still of sidewalk. Can we, can we finally get that thing moved as part of this project in the middle of the sidewalk?
Is that up by Sleepy Town?
No, this is, this is the.
Yeah.
You're saying a telephone pole or a hydrant?
It's a fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant.
Um, we certainly can talk to the Water District. I'm not sure how easy those things are moved. Maybe the Fire Chief could, they're purposely put 500 to 1,000 feet apart from one another and we'll just have to check, check in on them.
I don't want to move it 500 feet. I just, about four feet off the sidewalk would be nice and get it out of the way so that we could actually snow and plow the sidewalks and people don't have to go around it with baby carriages and bikes and everything else.
Yep, we'll, we'll work on that.
And we'll, we'll leave in the big tree, right?
The big tree in the back there?
Yeah, that's, is that on our property or is that on Ludik's?
I think that's Ludik's. It's ours?
Yeah.
It's right on the border of the right of way line in our property, but it's mostly ours.
Can you hear Mike on that?
Yeah, and it's staying, right, Mike?
Yep, yep, that's staying.
That's a nice tree.
It is. Thank you, Mike.
Any other comments or questions in regards to this project?
Yeah.
All right, move on to workshop number four, which is the presentation discussion and possible resolution for the end of Oxbart Lane for shell fishing and public access to the river.
I'll tee this up. The Shellfish Commission has, for years and years and years, used the end of Oxbart Lane of Mile Road as a entry point to launch kayaks or little boats to go clamming. And what has happened over the years is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has purchased more and more land in and around that area. When you look at the situation today, which Mike Livingston has done and is a memo in your package, it shows that the road does not access the water and ends. And so, what the fish, what the Shellfish folks have done is to ask for permission of the owner of a old foundation at the end of Oxbart, the Murphys, for permission for them to use their property to access the water. That does not, when you review it, it does not give the public access to the water. And so the point of this is that there is no direct access by the public that can get into the water from Oxcart Lane without crossing the U.S. Fish and Wildlife property. Over the years, the management of U.S. Fish has changed out. They've had interim folks for the last couple of years. And we have talked, Mike Livingston and I, to the interim director and now the permanent director, Carl Strohmeier, about ways in which this could be resolved in favor of shellfish holders of permits, how they could use this area on a continual basis during the shellfish times. And in your packet is the solution, which is that they would grant a permit to the town for the clambers to use that area. In return, they would like a gate put at the end of Oxcart Lane where there would be keys for the shellfish people. The alternative to that is what I put in the memo, which is a discussion with the foundation owner down there, the Murphys. And we have started that dialogue through their attorney. But we didn't want to incur any further cost of investigation because if their title to their property does not give them the right of water access, there's no, no purpose of doing any sort of recreational easement that they might grant the town or even the sale of their property to the town. So there would be a need to do some title work and some review by the law firm to determine whether that option had the outcome that would be desirous here.
I'm not, I won't vote for anything that closes that road off.
Not me either.
Fight whatever you have to fight.
Yeah.
One up down there, I used to use that road all the time. A lot of us kids did. I know there's less kids. But even as we got older, that's where I would take Sean Fish and we would launch our kayaks from that area. I get at high tide, you have water access. The water comes all the way up to the road. I could launch on any part of that road if I wanted to. I just, that to me is a big part of our heritage in our town and that road. I do not want to see us lose any of that.
Right, I agree. I have no, no no desire to put a gate up. I have no desire to change anything that's there right now unless we could get the property by the abutters. That's great. But right now, I'm not interested in doing anything, leaving it right the way it is. I'll let people access the way they always have.
That's fine. It would be the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Federal Police that may stop that.
Okay.
John, I have a question. I don't know. Mike put this together. Page two of three on the information that the board received under Part D. It reads, under colonial and common law, there's the right to standing in case law. If you'll be able to fish and follow and navigate intertidal areas. And the last statement, access or use of the land between the end of Oxcart Lane and the high water line can only be done with permission of the property owner. Now, is that the owner of the foundation or is that Fish and Wildlife that is technically the owner? Can you clarify that for me?
Yes, I wrote the memo and that would be U.S. Fish and Wildlife. You know, if there is a gap of land between the high water and the end of the road, then that would be their fee ownership. We'd need their permission to cross it. If there are sections where the high water comes right up to the road, then the high watermark comes up to the road and you wouldn't need that permission. But in most cases, there just can be a strip of land between the high watermark and the road where you need their permission to cross it.
So it sounds like then the only opportunity we have here is to Leah, do some research on title work and see if we can either get permission or access or purchase the land, but then we still would have to negotiate with U.S. Fish. Is that true?
Only if the land doesn't have any water access in their deeds.
Right, right. You would look at the deed to see if there's water access. That would be the first thing, you know.
I did look at the current deed to the existing old cottage lot that's there with the old foundation. And it gives a good meets and bounds description and it references right away across the U.S. Fish and Wildlife to get to Oxcart. It doesn't say anything about access rights to the water. So you'd have to dive into that chain of title and look at the old, much older deeds, because there was an old boat landing, boat right in that point, mid 1800s. So if there was some link between the old boatyards, chain of title and the cottage lot chain of title that would extend and give that cottage lot rights to the water, that's what investing in some pretty in-depth deed research would take probably by Leah to look at the chain of title. And it would take an actual trip to the registry because those deeds are old enough that they're not scanned in and available on the registry website. Because I took the chain back, chain title back as far as I could before the registry has a dead end there. You have to physically go up and look at the old deeds.
Well, it sounds like Leah, you have a job to do in regards to that because it just goes back to colonial common law. If there's any way that we have any kind of leverage to keep this open to the public, I'm going to take it. The board wants to move in that direction.
Right.
I bet you Peter Moody knows already.
Yeah, right, go see Peter. He might have the information, seriously.
That's exactly what you do.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I don't understand why they want to gate it. I just, I don't get it. I mean, it's not like there's 3,000 people heading down that road every day or anything like that. I just, it just bothers me that we even think that way, but.
Right. Nope.
Okay. Leah, you have a direction to go. Thank you. Moving on to good news. John?
A couple of things. Spectrum, as you may know, there was some challenges through legislation this last term of the legislature to roll back some spectrums and cable companies' authority in moving cable access channels from the Channel Three, that is pretty well standard throughout the state of Maine, to the higher spectrum channels, which is now 1301. So the law was passed and challenges were seen in the courts and fortunately, it lost. And so Spectrum is moving and doing a dual thing, moving the public access back to Channel Three, but keeping the 1301 channel. So we'll be seeing on two, two channels of Spectrum. So that's, that's good news. And that should start around August 1st. The we've had a number of letters that are in your packets that indicate good work by the many different departments of the town, public safety in particular, WIMS, fire, police, and our public works folks. So they come every week and they're, they're very supportive of our, our people.
Great. I'll be just going to roll back the monthly price, John, before you leave.
Do what now?
Can you roll back the price for every homeowner by 20% or something of the sort?
Sure, I'll try doing that.
Any other good news from the board? Did we, Sean's not with us tonight, but did he announce the final total tally for, you know?
I think it was just, it was right around $40,000. I think that was what they hit. He sent out a bunch of stuff to the businesses in the last two days to get a feel of how they want to do this, you know, how they're going to finish it up. So, but it was just under 40. It might have been right at 40, probably at the end, but $40,000. So it was quite an event. They did a great job.
Super, super.
He did a great job, really. Kudos to both.
Great. Moving on to open to the public, we're going to take some questions from the, from the public. Last week, we had an informational video that went out in regards to the budget and Warren article. So Brittany, I know you're on. If we could field maybe some questions, if anybody has any questions on the budget to the Warren article first, then we can open it up.
Yep. No comments came in so far regarding that, just two questions today. So not, not a lot.
Okay, well, go ahead. We'll open it up.
First one, when will the barrier at Public Way 15 be removed?
Currently, that is the plovers are there and 14 is the fox issue. There's a dent of foxes at the end, which we are still trying to figure out what we're going to do with, if anything. And 15 is the plovers. I would say within two weeks that can be removed as plovers will be flying and be out of here. So probably within two weeks.
The next question was answered, but I'll ask it again here. Will we be taking down the tree to the right of the proposed park?
No.
When will the library be fully open?
The library director is taking a proposal to open the library to her Board of Directors this Wednesday. And I should have a report back to the Board of Selectmen at the next meeting. It looks like it would be the soonest in August or maybe September. As you can see, there's not many libraries open. They are all doing the same thing with curbside service. They are working towards cleaning to open up. Libraries are a little bit different in nature in that when you go in, you are encouraged to touch books, open books. There is a problem with them trying to sanitize everything back. So there is a limitation on the number of people that can go in on the size of the library, but they're trying to come up with a way to do it safely. And I know she is trying every, every which way to talk to her peers in all the libraries and, and try to figure out a common sense approach to this opening.
Next question, why are there no portable bathrooms at the beach at the end of Drake's Island Road?
At the handicap parking area, there is there has never been bathrooms there. It's we, we haven't been asked before for that. And plus, it's, I'm not sure it will fit in that area, quite honestly, with the parking scheme that we have set up.
They're in the gross lot.
The bathrooms are right down the street in the gross lot. That's the first parking lot coming down Drake's Island Road and then also at the Jetty Beach.
Will trolleys be running next summer?
We left it with the trolley, the York County Community Action folks on a good note that yes, they would be coming back each year.
Are you able to pick up an absentee ballot at Town Hall now?
You can call and make an appointment and fill out the application and probably vote at the same time. And we ask you to make the appointment or you can go online and submit the application. Particularly at the state, you can do it through our website. But I found using the connection, the link from the town clerk's website goes to the state. The state form is filled out right online by you. And within a day or two, you get your absentee ballot.
Will we repair the road at Everett and Atlantic Ave? It was repaved two years ago and the patch is not acceptable.
I couldn't catch that, where the intersection was?
Everett and Atlantic Ave.
Well, I ask the Public Works Director to look at that. I believe that was caused by water main break last summer. And we'll take a look at it.
So it made mention that KKW did it. Now, if this is a bone of contention of mine because it seems like every time a road gets paved, we service utilities after the fact. If it was something that KKW did and didn't do it, if they did subpar work on it, is there any way of getting them to go back there and fix it? So we're not liable?
Well, we're going to, we're going to look to see if that's where the water main break was last year and see what the issue is.
Has the town or code enforcement had any issues with restaurants complying with state COVID-19 restrictions? Have there been any complaints?
The state has, has a complaint department and we have not received any complaints on restaurants as of yet.
That is everything so far.
Great, thank you, Brittany. Moving on to current agenda items, review and action accounts, payable and payroll warrants. John?
We have two warrants this evening. The chairman members board, the warrant, the treasurer's warrant is $848,572.57. We have repay periods during this last, since we last met. Net payroll dated June 18th, 2020, $87,354.79. The second net payroll week dated June 25th, $85,495.49. And the third net payroll dated July 2nd, 2020, $117,376.44. The federal withholding for those three periods, $120,172.93. Total expense, $1,258,972.22. Because we have closed out the year and July 1st start new financial year, we divide the warrant into two parts, FY '20, that was just closed out on the 30th. Of that, 1.258972. FY '20 was $720,780.96. FY '21, the year we're in presently, was $127,791.61.
Any questions on the warrant? Take a motion.
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated July 7th, 2020, in the amount of $1,258,972.22.
Take it. On favor?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you.
The second warrant this evening is split between general assistance and we are Wells Fund. The second warrant this evening is split between general assistance and we are Wells Fund. The total amount is $1,711.20. General assistance was $825. And we are Wells Fund is $886.20 for a total of $1,711.20.
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated July 7th, 2020, in the amount of $1,711.20.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero again, thank you. Next is update discussion and action on committees, projects, issues, purchases and personnel. Big discussion and action on confirming the public safety department's coordination plan for emergency medical ambulance dispatch.
Over the last few meetings, we've had brief discussions through people's questions of what was happening with WIMS and the fire department dispatch responses. And, and we received communications from WIMS about the coordinated plan done in 2014 being outdated. So what I had asked the public safety chiefs to do was to get together and come up with a plan. They, they spent several times working on it and they voted to endorse the plan that was initially done in 2018, the type of responses and so forth. So at the last meeting, I reported on that. At this meeting, the board wanted to confirm that action of the WIMS mutual aid agreement being outdated and that the 2018 response, dispatch response plan was the plan going forward.
Great, thank you. If there's nothing from the board, other than a thank you to the three department heads for getting that done, that's great. Kathy, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Selectmen formally acknowledged the agreement executed on June 3rd, 2020 between Chief Putnam, Chief Dupuy and Wells EMS Director James LaPola regarding the respective responsibilities of the Wells Fire Department and Wells EMS for emergency medical calls, which is identical to the protocol agreed upon by the two entities in July 2018. And to clarify that this June 3rd, 2020 agreement supersedes any contrary provisions contained in the mutual aid agreement entered by the two entities dated February 4th, 2014.
Second. All in favor? Four zero, thank you. Next is discussion and action on raising the deductible of the property claims with our insurance coverage for $10,000, which would equate to about a $3600 savings. Stated earlier by Bob Fulley. There's no questions on this, so take a motion.
I move to raise the property insurance deductible per claim to $10,000 from the $5,000 for a savings of $3600 and a little change.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero again, thank you. Next item is discussion and action on accepting the state COVID-19 municipal partnership awareness campaign grant in the amount of $1,600. John, you want to give anything on that?
Chairman members board, when this program came about, they gave us very short notice applications in. Captain Shabbitt of the police department took the lead with myself and we put together a program of work that we discussed a little while ago, but it involves mainly education, printing of a lot of brochures as well as ads in the tourist and town newspaper. A signboard that has built-in camera and remote access. The largest piece is the hiring of 10 beach ambassadors. And we want to also purchase and provide hand sanitizers for staff and public use. And so that, that amounts to $161,600. The state has awarded that to us. We will be, we'll ask you to authorize me to sign the contract. What that does is it's a reimbursement grant. So we will have to upfront the money and they will reimburse the cost of it. So that's basically it. We're a little bit behind the curve ball in that we're in the second week of summer and we're out there recruiting for the beach ambassadors. We have three or four candidates that are being interviewed. We hope others through looking at this will, will come forward. It's a great opportunity to be outside. I wish I was retired right now. I, I apply to walk the beaches every day and, and interact with the public in a very positive manner. This is what, what we're looking for. We're looking for people who want to be outside, who have the ability to walk and be diplomatic with, with folks and still talk about the beach rules that are enforced as well as the COVID-19 social distancing and expectation.
No questions from the board or comments? I'll take a motion.
What's the age on this ambassador? Is it?
It's, it's teens, 18 or, and above. So if you're 80 years old and want to walk and talk to people, that's great.
Okay, ready?
Good.
I move to authorize the town manager to sign the grant contract for the amount and items totaling $161,600 and to move forward with implementation.
Second. All in favor? Four zero again, thank you. Next is discussion and action on abating taxes on land now owned by the town of Wells. Seeking a total of $787.67 in tax abatements for land that was transferred to the town of Wells on February 6th, 2020. All the taxes up to the closing were paid by the owner. The town does not pay taxes on the remaining balance and the bills needs to be abated. So we will be abating the following properties that were currently passed on by Curtis G. Wormwood and purchased by the town of Wells. Numbers are all the same, 0116/033. And their date, then after following that, it's 001, 002, 003, 004, 005 and 006. I'll take a motion.
I move to have the Board of Selectmen abate the second tax bill installment for fiscal year 20 on the six parcels that were transferred from Curtis G. Wormwood to the town of Wells on February 6th, 2020.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you again. Next item is discussion and action to approve a quick claim deed for the that had a foreclosure date of February 27th, 2020. The six day buyback period for the property ended April 27th, 2020. Arthur Alfano Jr. and Belinda M., property is parcel 0027/006-430. Payment was received to pay fiscal years 18, 19 and 20 on June 24th, 2020. The quick deed releases a lien filed in booking page 17787/629.
Would that the Board approve and sign the quick claim deed to release the lien on the property listed above?
Second. All in favor? Oh, thank you. Next, we have discussion and action on accepting a fire pond easement from the Burnt Mill Holding Company located off the Harbs Farm Road. Jeff?
Again, this is outside of the fire hydrant area. And so in our planning, lane use, we're allowed for fire ponds or sprinklers to be put into the plan for these developments. This plan took the fire pond approach and have developed it. And the fire chief has worked with the developer and has tested the pond to his satisfaction. So there is a document of acceptance of the fire pond easement for this development for the board to consider. It allows us to cross their land, use their water to, in an emergency situation, put out the fire.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I move to accept the fire pond easement from Burnt Mill Holding Company LLC and authorize the town manager to sign it on behalf of the Board of Selectmen once the fire chief has certified its operations.
Second. All in favor? Four zero, thank you. Next is discussion and action on scheduling a public hearing to amend the town of Wells 2020 beach parking pass policy to include capacity allowed in each lot, including the COVID-19 availability reduction limit as adopted through the town parking and traffic committee report. Recognition that the lots have not been laid out by the, to the engineered design for 2020. I will say that voting on this is going to be purely based upon the engineering and traffic and parking study committee, nothing to do with COVID-19 other than we're certainly recognizing the pandemic. I guess we've had some positive feedback in regards to just the sheer volume of cars going into the parking lot. The information that's come back to some of the board members is maybe misinformation being given out. This is all COVID-19 related. It certainly is not. This was based upon the traffic and parking lot committee and the work that they put forth that came up with the numbers. Add to that, John?
Oh, we, we spent six months or longer than six months doing a parking and traffic study. And we pre-engineered the parking lots down at Drake's Island and over on Eastern Shore for a engineered number of vehicles that are, are appropriate on when, when we're able to either put the vehicle stops down and to properly design it. This year, we, we just didn't get enough time to do it and with COVID-19, we just let it lie the way it is. And so, but we're using those engineering numbers for an efficient parking lot at this time. So at the Eastern Shore parking lot, it would be 200 spaces, Mile Road 68, Gold Ribbon Lot 30, Roast Lot 146, Jetty Lot 125, Casino Square 86, Harbor Beach 28. That totals up 683.
Comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that we just want to make sure that we're, I got a lot of questions on this over the last two weeks. There must have been misinformation being by parking lot attendants, somebody saying it's all about COVID when it was never about COVID. This was about, to make the plan, you know, I mean, we saved 10% of the parking for resident pass holders. We had the two veteran, you know, places. We did these, these things to try to help the parking lots move smoother and help the people be able to access them easier. Never once was it about COVID. The only thing that was mentioned about COVID was we couldn't get things done in time to, because of COVID, to get the parking lots lined right and all that stuff. It's got nothing to do with that. And I see it on there and I see people saying we closed lots. We did this because of, that never happened. It didn't happen. And, you know, I just hate when there's that false information out there going on and, and let's make sure our attendants know to say why. Everybody's on the same page of why. It's not about COVID.
Right. And any, and this moving forward, anything referenced to this will have no reference to COVID-19. And it had nothing to do with it. We had the agreement prior to it. And I wasn't happy when I saw that COVID. COVID has nothing to do with this. It's based on the merits of making the parking lots safer, have an ability to turn around and help ease some of the traffic problems that we had at Drake's Island.
Anything else?
Huh?
I think that should clarify it.
Yep.
Take a motion.
I move to schedule a public hearing to amend the town of Wells 2020 beach parking pass policy to include the parking lot capacity allowed in each lot per the direction of the parking lot committee. And it will be on July 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM by Zoom at the Board of Direction Meeting, at Board of Selectmen Meeting.
Second. All in favor? Four zero again, thank you. Next is update discussion and action on personnel and committee assignment resignations and issues. John?
Yes, unfortunately, longtime Call Firefighter Jim Wheeler has decided that he's old enough to resign and retire from the service. And we wish him well. Jim has got a picture in the fire service for us as Rick Clark and, and others have been. And we will miss him. And, and I know the fire chief is working to think to come appropriate.
Make tires.
So Brett Mariner, I've been sitting on Brett's retirement notice until we had our employee appreciation luncheon the other day. And he has put in 25 years of service and he was awarded a chair, town chair. And he's very grateful, but he's now retired and I'm reporting on his retirement from the town. And then I guess I would say that in working with the town clerk's office over the last month or so and, and very wanting to make sure her in-person voting day works well. She could use still five to 10 poll workers during July 14th, in-person voting at the junior high. And so I would put out to the public that if anyone would like to work the polls, either through volunteering or being paid, there is a need from that office to have five to 10 more people work during that day. So that's it. This is chairman.
So where would they go if they wanted to know, if they wanted, if people wanted to know how to?
They, they would call the town clerk, Justice Tyze and 646-5113 and then the extension.
Do you know what the extension is?
No, but the automated person would tell you.
Yeah, after a long, okay, okay. 28, where, where, yeah.
Well, let's not guess. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Under the Board of Selectmen, I am, for those who do not know that our current town manager, Mr. Carr, is retiring this year after a couple of decades plus of service. And it's my distinct honor and pleasure to be announcing that an exhaustive and very lengthy search that has gone on. We started the process of interviewing months and months ago. Epidemic hit and we had to hold back and it was, we ended up with six finalists that we interviewed. Of the six, it's my distinct pleasure to announce that Larissa Of the six, it's my distinct pleasure to announce that Larissa Crockett of. Is going to be our new town manager. A great deal of experience and desire and. I'll say quite a bubbly personality that was most impressive and. She she won't be starting officially until August tenth. As she gives proper notice where she currently is working. We want to welcome Larissa on board and thank her for accepting the position. I have her signed contract. And tonight we'll be voting to authorize all of the Board of Selectmen to be signing her contract and welcoming her. That at our next meeting, we'll be able to do a formal introduction, but. To get this done so that it was done and. So Kathy, if you would. The motion to.
Yep, I make a motion that we authorize the board to hire a new town manager, Larissa Crockett, for the agreed upon contract.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you and.
Welcome aboard, Larissa.
Yes, we'll be trying to set something up so that we can do a much better job than just that, so. Rules at this point in time, unfortunately, but we'll we'll get her before the the public here stone and we welcome. Glad to have her joining our team. Next is the acceptance of a resignation of Corey DeWitt. He's submitted his resignation from the Board of Assessment Review effective immediately.
I move to accept the resignation and send a letter thanking him for his service.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero, thank you. Next is the appointment of Jessica Kies as warden for the presidential primary special referendum and annual town meeting elections on. July eleventh or fourteenth, John?
No, it's the eleventh. We we all were, well, I was confused. Last time we we had duplicates of of this, but July eleventh is when they. Do the early capulation of votes that they have obtained to date with the absentee ballot. And so these folks need to be. Torn in at that at that time or appointed at that time.
Okay.
Okay. I'm I move to appoint Jessica Kies as warden for the presidential primary special referendum and annual town meeting elections on July eleventh, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero, thank you again. Next is the appointment of Carrie Van Shack as deputy warden for the presidential primary special referendum and annual town meeting elections on July eleventh, twenty twenty.
I move to appoint Carrie Van Shack as deputy warden for the presidential primary special referendum and annual town meeting elections on July eleventh, twenty twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you. Next is the Board of Selectmen annual appointments of department heads and positions as required by state statute.
I move to appoint the following list of town department heads and their functions as annually required by state statute and placed on file with the town clerk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, thank you. Next, I would discuss an action on accepting donations and bequests with the first being. One thousand five hundred and fifty dollars from the Wells Public Library Foundation, Inc. To the Wells Public Library representing distribution. Of from Otter Stackhouse Nelson in the Gordon Funds.
I move that we accept a generous donation and write a letter of thanks to the donor.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero again, thank you. Next is discussion and action on approving the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty selectmen's meeting. Correction or changes need to be addressed.
I move for approval of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty selectmen's meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Four zero again, thank you. To new business for the second time this evening, we are open to the public. Any other questions have come in?
Yes, first question, will we reconsider limiting the number of cars in the parking lots, especially since there are no trolleys?
Read that again for me, please.
Will we reconsider limiting the number of cars in parking lots, especially since there are no trolleys?
I think the the vote that we just passed was the limits set forth as our traffic enforcement and parking lot committees put forth and we just voted on.
So just move it forward to a public hearing, right? So.
We're going to a public hearing, so I don't think that'll be reconsidered.
Um, as it stands today, what is the maximum capacity? Is it fifty percent of capacity, forty percent, et cetera?
Six hundred and eighty three parking spaces. In the town. Parking lots.
The police officer was at the Atlantic Ave parking lot, having all the cars turn around caused more traffic. Why can't we park if we paid for a sticker? What seems to be the issue with traffic if all cars are parked?
I don't understand the question.
They lost me.
Question was, I believe that people who have beach stickers were going to park. In the Atlantic Ave parking lot and were being told to turn around and they're not sure why. Because they paid for a sticker and they noticed that there were multiple spots open.
Were they reserved first?
Yeah, we they may be specially marked spots where I'll address that with the parking attendants.
Okay.
Remember that people should remember if they're going to Eastern Shore, there are some mooring spots. There's some other. But so at the end of Atlantic Ave, there there will be some spots for moorings that will be maybe empty when you get there. Don't. It doesn't mean the lot isn't full. We we have to reserve those for the boat owners too, so.
Um, next question, can we put aside time in the next meeting to talk about installing a canopy over the benches at Wells Beach?
Are we talking Casino Square, the? The patio area?
I believe so.
Well, that. That would be very, very difficult, I think. To do. I don't, I don't know if the board wants to entertain that or or not.
They must be talking something similar to a gunk that has right down by the.
Yeah, that's what I.
The gunk with canopy was mentioned, so I didn't put their references.
Like a tent or something that can come down in the winter? Nothing's gonna survive that in the winter.
It's right, yeah, this comes down in the.
Um, question here, oh, sorry.
We we can look at that. If the board wishes, I can try to figure that out and bring it back.
I'll get some photos.
Um, question here, what are the specifically marked spots? I think this is in reference to parking, parking lots?
It was for mooring holders, boat owners.
Okay.
Well, there's also identified local spots and veteran spots as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Can we mark off those spots for boat owners?
Well, it is designated to the left as you come in.
So the parking lot shouldn't, attendants should should be aware of that and they would be able to explain it to people, right, Joanne?
Yep, well, we'll talk to them again. Yeah, we have some new people this year that.
Yeah.
May not be as well first.
Copy of our parking assessment there is available on the webpage, correct?
Yes.
This is a reminder that that information's out there if anyone's curious.
Um, if there are six hundred and eighty three parking spaces in Wells, what percent of them are open as I'm being told that not all six hundred and eighty three spaces are open?
Those are six hundred and eighty three spaces we fill.
Um. Um. Um, we get to move to the next question. Kathy, did you want to say something?
No, no, I I was just trying, I was just going looking back at what it, how it was written, so we're all.
Um, one last question here, can we look into portable bathrooms at the end of end of Drake's Island Road? For the sake of handicapped and elderly?
Certainly can look into it. I I don't know if the design of the. Handicap parking down there will allow for room for a handicap or a portable. John right there.
You would probably end up losing spaces.
I was gonna say you'd lose some parking spaces.
I mean, that's why people drive into the gross lot, use the facilities and usually then go park there is what normally happens.
Um, in reference to parking, who do we consider locals? Are they taxpayers?
Anyone that is a real estate taxpayer can get a beach sticker. For their vehicle or vehicles. And those that do not have to pay at the meal.
Those are all the questions.
Hey, thank you, Brittany.
Of course.
Moving on to the town managers' report, John.
I. I mentioned this last time, we're having an August twenty ninth household has this waste collection. Again, at the Kenny Bunk Solid Waste Facility on C Road, it goes from eight A M. To one P M. And just a reminder that we are holding beach concert series, Harbor Park Beach. Harbor Park Concert Series and we had our first one July fourth. The seating is set up to be covid nineteen compliant. We ask people to bring masks. Wear them and and keep the social distancing as required.
That it? Anything else from the board? Only one more thing, there will be a video presentation again on the budget and warrant articles immediately following this broadcast, so. Questions that might be prudent to stay on and continue to watch, so.
I did have one more thing, actually, Carl.
Yeah, go ahead.
Wanted to commend Kevin Shabbat on his doctorate.
Yep.
Oh, that's right, nice.
Doctor of Education.
Very good.
I'm not calling him doctors.
Yeah, Dr. Shabbat.
Dr. Captain Shabbat.
Dr. Kathy.
Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn, Kathy.
I make a motion we adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, thank you. Good night. Stay well.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Hey, thank you.
Hello, fellow residents of the Town of Wells, Mike Livingston, the town engineer and planner. Now, this is our annual video we do for informational purposes for the upcoming town warrant that'll be occurring on July fourteenth. Like to start off, the purpose of this meeting, of course, is to to provide the public with background information on the articles they'll be voting on at the town meeting. And we try to cover most of the articles in this informational session, but we do try to keep it brief to keep your your attention with the information. Across to everyone as much as possible. So the first item on the agenda is the budget, which is a critical item in the that you'll all be voting on and I'll turn it over to John and Jody.
Thank you, Mike. I'm John Carter, town manager, and in a few days, you'll be receiving the town meeting book. It looks like this. In the mail, we are with the Board of Selectmen having three informal hearings on the budget. And the warrant articles associated with that. It is a process that we undergo from early. Fall through March and I'm going to turn it over to Jody, our finance director, to kind of describe the process.
So back in December, department heads produced their budget, the town manager and I. Took all that information that was submitted by department heads, compiled it into a budget that we then presented to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, once they accept that budget, turn it over to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee started meetings in the first week of January and we just finished with the Budget Committee just recently. But part of the task of the Budget Committee is to make sure that we present to back to the selectmen and to the voters. A budget that is under L D one, which is the tax cap that we have to follow. And the budget that we have proposed is meeting that goal. We are under the tax cap by almost a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
This is all processed through our town charter and is regulated by that. Our budget process has produced a budget for F Y twenty one, which starts July first. And the budget is is divided in the book, so you can see revenues. Salaries, operations, capital improvements and the standard warrant articles that are passed through. And are part of the capital improvement project program. On salaries, we are up two to four percent. We are in negotiations with four labor groups and we have. Finalized one contract and we have three other contracts as of today, June first, to resolve. We are making good progress there. The gross operating budget is up. That is because of our debt financing and. Benefits and other insurances. We have warrant articles that are up for the purpose of buying conservation lands, which we'll be getting into in a minute. And our capital improvement plan is down by almost twenty two percent. Revenues are a little bit off this year, but they're still very healthy. Even in the covid nineteen era, we believe we're closing F Y twenty in the black. As we speak, June first, it looks that way. In F Y twenty one, July first, we will be watching the first quarter. As well as the second quarter and putting some funds aside, just making sure. In that situation that revenues are coming in and that we won't be making those expenditures. Until we see a revenue picture and and how healthy we are as a community. So. Our budget is is locked in place. We are looking at a July fourteenth. Special. Town meeting in the sense that it was moved from June ninth by the governor to July fourteenth because of the covid nineteen. And we'll be at the junior high. We urge people to do absentee voting. At at the request absentee ballots. And you can do that from our website under the town clerk page or by calling the town clerk. Or contacting the Secretary of State for an absentee ballot. So Jody, what other important data points that you see with the budget?
So in our proposed budget, taxpayers will see that we're looking at a school tax increase of approximately one point two eight percent. The tax rate that we're presenting in the budget is based on a one percent increase in valuation. We won't know what our valuation is until the assessor is through with her spring pickup, which will happen later this summer. But currently, if we only pick up the 1% in tax valuation, we're looking at a tax rate of $3.56 on the municipal side, which would be up 29 cents from last year. And then we want to note that our budget does include some key things. In the CIP project, there's some equipment that we need to purchase. And then we also have a bond that's on this year's warrant article that will be asking you to vote to allow us to go to bond. So that is one of the biggest items on the budget.
And we'll be talking about that in a moment.
Great. And for the voters, all the budgetary articles are Articles 3 through 13. That'll be on the town warrant and the ballot. Articles 15, 14, 15, and 16 are regarding the conservation land acquisitions that John had referenced earlier. And we have Keith Fletcher from the Conservation Commission that's available here at the meeting as well to discuss those items. All three involve the land acquisitions of conservation lands. So Keith, can you describe each of those to us?
I sure will. Thank you very much. So Articles 14, 15, and 16 come from the Conservation Commission and carry on the tradition in the Town of Wells of purchasing some land and setting it aside for conservation, both for wildlife and for people to enjoy, to protect water quality and kind of keep some of the rural character here in Maine, the beautiful town we are in. So Article 14 is a conservation land purchase. This piece of land is between Meeting House Road and Route 109. Although the warrant article says 60 acres, we've had some survey work done. We believe it to be 74 acres. This tract of land will be accessed, not now, but in the future by the public from the Eastern Trail, which we expect to come through in about, I don't know, five to 10 years through that area. So right now it's off a private road. We're not encouraging people to go down a private road, but it is an important conservation piece. And to help the town afford this parcel of land, we did, we were successful in obtaining two large sums of money. One was $120,000 grand from the Maine Natural Resources Conservation Program. And the other was a $70,000 bargain sale by the landowner, who in that way gave the first gift. So this is beautiful land. It's wooded wetlands, lovely for wildlife. It's very important as a stopping point for especially large animals moving between conservation areas to the south and west, up to Kanabang Plains and back. We know black bear move through here, moose, all sorts of critters use this land. So the town, we're requesting $120,000 from the Land Bank, which is a capital improvement fund for this purpose, which would add on to the $190,000 and other funds that were raised and result in acquisition of, of this, this parcel of land for conservation. The, the next one, Article 15, is an important addition to the Flanders Wildlife Commons, which is a large wetland that is mostly in town ownership now. It protects water quality in the Maryland River and Eaton Brook and helps protect water quality in wells and so forth and is also favored by hunters. And this would improve access to that backland there off of Bald Hill Road and would also protect stream frontage along Eaton Brook. It's a very beautiful piece of land and we'll be getting that at a very good price. And for that, we are requesting $144,000 from the Land Bank at Capital Improvement Fund I mentioned earlier to acquire that. And that would again improve access and it's also just great habitat, beautiful, beautiful land in there. And last is Article 16, which is been planned for a while. This is a six acre addition to the Getchell Wildlife Commons that the town purchased several years ago. Really interesting piece of land that it is, over 130 acres. It has a very diverse habitat, meadows, scrubs, shrub wetlands, scrubby lands, old farm foundations, things like that. Interesting piece of land. But what this would do is really improve access to that land, which is, the current access is on a road, but it's very wet. So this is nice, high, dry access. This six acres is also used currently by folks who train bird dogs. There's a nice course set up for training bird dogs for hunting and for pheasants. So this, this, as part of that, we will be working with the Bragden Estate also to give them a right of way over a strip of town land that will improve their ability to manage their land off Route 9. And so you'll see that in the second part of the article's description. But, so we hope with this six acres, besides the fact that it's a lovely field, nice in its own right, it's, it's great legal access to Getchell pasture and label people to cross, crossover into that Wildlife Commons. And for that, we're asking $82,000, although we think we can bring it in a little less than that because the survey costs will not be as high as we first thought. They're all great projects. I hope you support them. They all got unanimous votes in favor from both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Please support the work of the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Keith. And if people want to know where the exact location of those properties are, in, in the appendix of the book that you'll get in the mail, Appendix 1, 2, and 3 show the locations of each of those parcels.
Thank you, Mike.
The next article to be discussed is Article 17, which is the road bond issue and seawall bond issue. And I'll turn over that discussion to Carol Murray.
Thanks, Mike. It's actually three components. There's roads, there's seawalls, and also a bridge. All, all of these items are critical pieces of infrastructure that need some attention. I'll tackle the roads first and then Jim Hall from Dubon King is also here. And we'll talk more about the bridges and seawalls with Jim. He's a structural engineer, but he does speak English, not just engineering. So I think you'll find he's informative. Swamp John Road, as you're all aware, has been in a bad state of disrepair, maybe never a good state of repair. And quite frankly, the only way to fix it is to go back down to the bottom of the road and rebuild it from ground level back up. And unless you get water out from underneath the pavement and get good material under the pavement, you'll never keep a road. So that, that's why this project seems very expensive. It is, but it's a one-time fix and then you have a road that's going to be there for seven to probably 11 years with, with nothing being done and then only minor crack filling and that sort of maintenance. A million dollars seems like a lot, but there is a lot of traffic on that road. It's not just people that live on the road and it's not just gravel trucks. It's constant traffic. This will fix it correctly. And as I said, we can, we can say it's been done and you'll have a good road to travel on for a substantial amount of time with only minor maintenance in the future. Robinson Road and Pine Ledge Road were accepted by the town when development was done. Unfortunately, as is typical back in that era, the drainage was not designed with existing and in fact, future demands on that system being considered. Those folks that live on that U essentially have lived with road drainage into their basements, into their front yards for a long time. It is so flat and so ledgy that there's really not an easy way to get the drainage collected and, and appropriately dealt with. As we started working on this project, it became pretty clear that it was going to be necessary to collect all the drainage in a retention pond, let Mother Nature do some evaporation from that, but also in high storm times, have an overflow mechanism where rainwater could in fact, collect and then be discharged to a pond. So that all added to the cost of the project. It's been promised to these folks for a long, long time that live there, as well as those of us that traveled through there. And it's really now time to fix the problem so they can have full enjoyment of their property without the town's water compromising that. So yes, that's up over a million dollars. Again, it seems like a lot, but it's the appropriate way to fix the problem so we never have to go back there and do it again, except for routine maintenance. We brought Jim Hall on board with Dubon King because I'm, I'm an engineer, but I'm not a structural engineer. And I took Jim on kind of a field trip to go look first at Drake's Island. So Jim, if you want to talk a little bit about that bridge, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, no problem. Thanks, Carol. Yeah, the Drake's Island Bridge is routinely inspected by the Maine Department of Transportation. And during the last inspection, they sent a letter of deficiency to the town stating that there were certain deficiencies in the bridge that needed to be addressed. Carol reached out and asked if we could take a closer look. On further investigation, we noticed that the timbers are in significantly poor condition, in particular the substructure, which, which means that which are the timbers that support the bridge. The timbers that make up the pier have significant deterioration and have marine bores. In addition to the poor condition of the timber, all of the rail on the bridge and the approach rail has either failed or is in the process of failing. Given that these are life safety issues, you know, there's something that needs to be addressed immediately. Given the challenging environment and the geometrics of the Drake's Island Bridge, we've recommended to the town that they completely replace the bridge. It provides a single point of access to Drake's Island and the construction will be rather complex to, you know, maintain traffic. So we're recommending that they do, you know, a single, as opposed to a rehabilitation at this point. It makes the most sense for the long-term impacts to the community on Drake's Island to, to replace it at this point.
So while Jim was here, we also took a look at some seawalls. We started out at Casino Square. Again, I'm not a structural engineer, but I was concerned about the integrity of that seawall. We then looked at a couple of other walls, one of which is a FEMA project from a year ago in March in that storm. We have an extension to our FEMA grant to bring us through November of this year. So Jim, maybe you could talk a little bit about the seawalls and what you see there?
Sure. I guess to start with, the FEMA project is, the Crescent Beach wall is about a 200-foot section of wall that was severely damaged in a storm event. There is a, it's currently supported by a concrete wall and steel sheet pile system. The steel sheet pile system that's part of it has been completely damaged. So it's no longer providing any structural capacity to the wall. This wall system, you know, is immediately supporting webhanit road. So that, that section of the wall, you know, really needs to be replaced immediately. The sub-based materials below the road at this point, it's, you know, without a subsurface investigation, it's hard to tell exactly what's supporting the road. So we've recommended that they go, we go in and, and do some soil borings to test, see exactly what's supporting the road and, you know, and immediately replace the steel sheet piles. So I guess that's the section at Crescent. I guess the other areas along webhanit, there are, need significant repair. It, it looks like it's been kind of rehabilitated off and on over the years. But, you know, there's certain sections that are going to require significant concrete rehabilitation. There's large cracks and spalls. And if, while we're out fixing this section that's failed, you know, if we, if we patch and seal and chip the, the sections with significant deterioration, we can extend the service life of, of those remaining pieces of wall. And I guess the last segment was the section at Casino Square. When we looked at the section at Casino Square, the section of Casino Square is, is the concrete's in poor condition as well. There's severe cracking. There's movement in the wall that's just north of the lookout. It looked like the lookout section had been rehabilitated at some point, but the concrete in that section has been, is failing as well. So, you know, we're working currently on, on a cost to replace that. But right now we're looking at proposing maybe a hybrid of some of it gets rehabilitated and some of it gets replaced. But it's in very, very poor condition. If you go along the beach there, you can see the large concrete spalls. You know, it's, it sees heavy traffic in the summer and it doesn't have an extended service life left in it without a significant rehabilitation or replacement.
But having said that, I want to be sure everybody understands that it's safe to travel. If they were in danger of imminent failure, we would be closing the roads or taking other protective measures. Hopefully that helps explain the projects that we're looking for the bond on. And that's just the engineering side. I think John wants to talk a little bit about the financial side of it.
So the cost of doing this work is estimated around $4.5 million. We are in the development planning phase. We have two engineering costs presently for the road work and drainage work. We don't have yet, from Mr. Hall, coming, coming within the next few weeks, cost estimates for the Drake's Island Bridge and the three seawalls. One of the seawalls will be reimbursed by FEMA at 75%, but we have to pay out 100% and wait for the 75 to come to us. And that will possibly include moving utility lines to the opposite side of the street on the Crescent Beach project. We went to the Board of Selectmen and Carl Exted, our chair, is with us tonight. And we had a discussion with the Board of Selectmen. They asked Jody to work on the spreadsheet that we put together through their recommendations when we put the public safety conflicts of looking at 20 years out and taking into account the LD1, the requirement of having 60 to 90 days of operating funds and together whether our cash would carry us into the future, if we were cash flow into the future, if these, if this $4.5 million bond would take place. We then, and we'll, we'll talk briefly on that. We then went to our bond counsel and bond broker. And our bond broker has put together a plan where we would do bond anticipation notes to fund the projects and then we right-size the bond to be no more than 4.5 or if it's less, then it would be less than that. So Carl, did you want to say anything on, on that?
Yeah, first off, since we're talking about the overall budget, I wanted to thank the administration, all the department heads and the Budget Committee for all of the work and effort put in to get us to where we are. Jody, being the keeper of the funds, has done a wonderful job with Casey Welch, her assistant. And believe me, nobody, nobody wants at this stage of the game to be talking about borrowing another four or five million dollars. But as Carol and Jim Hall have said, you know, this, these are things that are life safety. They may not be imminent, dangerous right now, but they, this is not going away. The folks on Pine Ledge I worked with over the last three years, they've been extremely patient. This is a project that needs to be done. And of course Swamp John is something that it's no longer cut and paste and throw some coal patch on it and fix it. This is, this is a road that's heavily traveled that needs to be fixed. So in looking at this from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, all, all five of us are totally agreement. So in looking at this from the Board of Selectmen's perspective, all five of us are totally agreement on numbers, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be around 1.5% interest rate. And, you know, with the COVID-19 and the federal government, we only can hope that with the getting in front of this and voting this in now, that maybe, just maybe, there's a way for us to get some federal dollars coming back to us. So we're ahead of the curve by doing that. So we wholeheartedly support the $4.5 million. If it can be less, it will be. But we certainly, for a few months now, ever since the pandemic has hit, we've been asking a lot of questions, and Jody's been keeping us informed with the town manager in regards to where we stand financially. Certainly, we're all concerned about the budget. We're going to be in the black, as the town manager has said, for this year, and we will be watching probably almost on a daily basis in this next budget cycle to see where we stand to make sure that we remain healthy and strong, because we've been so ultra-conservative over the last 20 years, probably, by putting money away for buying equipment and doing things the way we've done it. We are financially in pretty good shape versus some other communities. So kudos to Jody and her staff and all the administration, working collectively together so that we can do things like put the land in conservation, which has always been supported by the town. We still have the ability to do things like that and to keep the people safe. So from the Board's perspective, we wholeheartedly support these projects.
Well, great. That's a great discussion on the warrant, the warrant article involving the bond issue. And to wrap things up, I think John might want to say a few words about the voting procedure. You already touched upon it earlier, but July 14th is the date.
Yeah.
Normally, we would have voted June 9th, but the governor pushed off the elections to July 14th. The Board of Selectmen moved the town meeting, the annual town meeting, to that date. And we are encouraging people to either do absentee voting or be at the polls, which is at the junior high on the 14th from 8:00 to 8:00 p.m. And so we are, as I said earlier, mailing out our town meeting booklet the week of June 1st, and that should be in the hands of everyone by the weekend. So thank you very much.
Thank you all, and stay well.